Good evening, everyone. At this time, we're going to call the Amherst County Ordinance Supervisors meeting. The order, let the record reflect that today is February 16th, 2021, and the time is seven o'clock PM. Is there an approval of the agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
There's motion on the floor by Mr. Ayres. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will be led by the indication of budgetal allegiance by Mr.
Our heavenly Father, bless the people that have come here tonight. These are people that want the best for Amherst County. They spend their time, their effort, and they talk to other community members who are trying to figure out what is best for this county and its people. Dear Lord, please bless the public safety folks who go out every night, every day protecting us and our family. Please bless our Sheriff's Department, our deputies. Please bless all the people that support them. Dear Lord, we ask that you give wisdom to our public leaders, both at the state and the national level. Let them do what is best for this country and not for special interests. Dear Lord, please give us guidance, give us patience, keep our mouths shut when it should be, and let us speak when we should. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Up next, we have citizen comments. Nobody has signed up, but is there anybody here wishes to address the board? All right, seeing and hearing none, we're going to close citizen comments. And we're moving on to the public hearing. This is for ordinance 2021-0002. This is the third time that it has been before the board. And it's to relocate the polling place from Bloodsview Elementary School to New Prophet Baptist Church. Or is there any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak opposed to? Anybody here wishing to speak opposed to? Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of? All right, at this time, we are going to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, move that the board adopt the ordinance as presented.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Ayres. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for the agenda. Any board have any questions?
I'm making motion, we approve the consent of general.
All right, motion on the floor by Mr. Pew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to old business. At this time, Ms. Hitzkamp, if you want to come up.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for having me here. I'll leave quickly for your consideration for the adoption of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. This has been a long, 18, 20 months in the making. I was here early to sort of talk about the plan. I'll just quickly go over the background, mitigation actions, and primarily for the adoption. Again, the Disaster Mitigation Act, federal funding from FEMA that allows access to and eligibility for their funding programs for their pre-hazard and their post-hazard pre-dateter mitigation program funding. And the funding in this has gone up every year for the past five years. And what they've shown is $1 in pre-mitigation saves $6 in post-hazard is what they're showing for the dollars. And again, quickly the process, obviously, we have the planning process, the assets, the assets and the risk. And that's where we have the consultants are really looking at the data, the hazard provisions, asset inventory, loss estimates. We developed our mitigation strategies with school go over here, and then here we are now, the adoption process. We have comprehensive stakeholder process. The Amherst County had two representatives and Chief Bryant, your Director of Public Safety, and Bob Hopkins, Director of the Amherst County Service Authority. But throughout the process, we also had your Planning Director, your Administrator. We talked to the, we talked to the school system, we talked to public safety, what they said, Sam, we talked to extension. So it was very comprehensive, and then we had a public process. And the plan is, it's long. It's seven chapters, and at the end, that's what it is. You're looking at your natural hazards. We also look at two man-made hazards. You look at the assets within your community, and then you look at that cross-section, that cross-section. What are the things that you can do to minimize the risk? You can't stop tornadoes or those sort of things, but what can you do to help minimize the impact of those things? Quickly, the plan has introduction, and the executive summary, if you take away nothing, it is a long document. It's 572 pages. That executive summary is nine pages, so it says a lot in those nine pages. Community profile is your second chapter. You know who we are, but that's something. The planning process, pretty standard within that chapter, the how, who, and when. And then the meat really gets to those last chapters, the Hazard Information Risk Assessment Chapter. That's that higher, the hazard description. There's 20 hazards in the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Some of those, as you can imagine, really mean a little bit more. The probability is higher, right? Flooding, tornado, some of the hazards as required by FEMA, karst, landslides, and some of those things have a low probability, low risk, but they're looked at with a plan. We look at a capabilities assessment. That's really an overview of the plans, the programs, and the policies, and the staff capacity within each locality, because that differs. Obviously, the capacity at county level is greater than the capacity at the town level, and so you want to make sure you have strategies that match that capacity. And then we talk about the mitigation strategies, and then the monitoring and maintenance. And I want to say in earnest, that's pretty important with this plan, because it was really where we fell in the last plan. That last plan didn't have a maintenance and monitoring program. So when good things were done in all the localities within the service authority, where y'all strengthened the riverbank for the sewer, that should have been recognized, but it wasn't because we didn't do that. That's something that we will do in this plan, so that the localities get the credit that you want to, and it serves an arrow in your quiver when you go back to funding. I just want to quickly go over, this plan also has a website. It's a very interactive website. That's what you'll see when you go to the website, cbhmp.org. And you can see the tabs, within the tabs, you can go directly to the access to the plan. You can take that tab down, you can see the hazards, you can quickly see all 20 hazards, and then you can go directly to mitigation strategies. And I'll just pretend we're clicking through a website. And this is what you see if you pull down from hazard, and every one of the 20 hazards has this level of specificity that you can look at individually. And on that left side, you see the description of the hazard, the location of the event, historical occurrences. You can download the individual chapter, you can get feedback, and then the hazard relationship, which I'll go over, and then we have the maps. And that becomes really important, because it's very interactive. You can have an interactive access to the maps, which I'll show you in a second. So you're clicking, and this is the hazard in a relationship, and this was actually considered a best practice. FEMA kind of gave us a best practice, and this will be something that they recommended that all hazard mitigation plans have. It was a brainchild of the folks at Virginia Tech. And what it does is it shows the relationship of a hazard to those other things that are impacted by that hazard. So when you have a flooding event, there's a possibility that it's somehow tied to a hurricane, right? You had lots of rain, you had a rainy event. A flooding, a landslide might be a secondary offshoot. So it kind of helped, and if you go to the website, you can move that, you can see within each hazard, you have that. And then we also, this is within the flooding chapter, which is the most robust chapter, right? It's a lot of, it's about dam inundation, it's 87 pages. But we created a dashboard for every locality, and this is important, too, because remember I said in our last hazard mitigation plan, we did a four dial and maintenance? And so we use this as a baseline. So we will keep up with how many flood insurance policies there are in the county. We'll keep up with how many policies are paid out. We'll keep up with what the impact is and any changes that might be done to structures within, within your floodplain or those type of things. And this will be updated. And then this, you can't see that, but each one of those dots are specific information relative to sensitive structures in the floodplain. And that's great, right? In the hard copy, you can see that, it's full of tables, but as I said, it's really long. What matters is if you go to the website and you click on the maps, you will get to an interactive map. And this is what you will see, and you see the ledge in there. Each one of those locations, you can click on that and hone into it, so you can see sensitive structures. We'll keep up where things are improved, or any type of activities or mitigation strategies that we will maintain throughout the plan. And that's what you would see if you blow up, right? That's a portion of Amherst County. And that's what you would see, right? That little click there is a portion of a road that is a crossing that's within a floodplain. So again, it's another way that maybe we can partner with BDOT and those type of things. And that's for every hazard, we have that ability to be interactive. Then you have your capabilities assessment chapter. That's again, where we look individually at the planning documents, the legal capabilities, the administrative, the physical strength of the locality, and then the technical capabilities. Again, the towns don't have GIS departments, so again, you don't want to develop strategies that don't match those capabilities. This is, again, you can't see this, but you can go on the plan, and you can click directly to this on the website as well. And this table was done in concert with your staff directly on the capabilities for Amherst County. And again, how we can sort of move and change those partnerships. And then the mitigation strategies, right? That's the meat. There's five mitigation strategy types. That one, I think, when I came, I guess about a year ago. We have your information and outreach, prevention capacity. Again, those are those planning type activities, public, property protection, those are measures to fortify structures, and that can include, oh, I'm sorry, generators and those type of things. Structural projects and natural system resiliency projects, those tend to be the high dollar, right? Where you're talking about engineering and multiple funding and those type of things. And information and outreach are those low-cost things that are done in partnership with the region in general. And I want to show you that this is what you would see if, on that main page, you click that mitigation box. You will go to this page, and people can see there's a mitigation where we write it out, you know, like the regional wording, like a comprehensive plan. And then if you scroll down on that page, you get to this section where the jurisdiction-specific mitigation actions, and you can see there on the right side, you can click each locality's specific mitigation strategies. And what matters to you guys are Amherst County's. And Amherst County had 23 strategies, but it's important to point out, of those 23 strategies, eight of those are very specific to the service authority. And what's also very important is the mitigation strategies are not, are not, I adopt this plan, therefore I shall do all of these activities. They represent things that you, we can do, you know, if the funding is right. And you can see, they also have a variant of priority, a high priority, a medium priority, or a low priority. But again, they're not, they do not bind Amherst County to do these activities. And again, they start simple with information outreach. You know, that's an example, they're developing vulnerability analysis, security plans for facilities, equipment, and procedures. And where necessary, executing improvements to harden public utilities. Again, that's an application that the service authority put in, and was, you know, that you're looking for funding to be able to do those things for safety. And hopefully you guys were able to see these when we sent the link in your package. But again, you have low, again, you can see some low probability and things that are ongoing. Initiate studies to execute flood and dam structural improvements. That's been done on a number of the dams in partnership with, or partnerships with Hurricane Robert Prophet, ongoing. And here's your strategies. And then here we are for this evening, your adoption consideration. The plan, the draft plan was submitted to BDM in October. I want to point out, we did have a third public review of the plan in October, November. We had met FEMA's and BDM's requirement, but we just felt like there'd been a lapse with COVID and those sort of things. So we had a third public input process. Then we draft submitted to FEMA in December. FEMA, we had a meeting with them on the 21st. We resubmitted based on a few little things they wanted us to change, and FEMA provided their approval pending adoption on January 22nd. And now we're taking it to localities. And that last one just points out that the plan, it's a five-year plan, that's when you're eligible, and the clock ticks when the first locality adopts the plan. And the, oh, let's see, who went first? Let's see, Abomax Town adopted on the 8th of February, so the 9th of February starts that four years, 364 days. And I'm happy to answer any questions and appreciate, again, the credit to all the work that Amherst County staff and Amherst Town did together, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hitzkamp. Anybody got any questions? Thank you. I believe we need a motion.
Madam Chair, move that the board adopt resolution 2021-0003-R as presented.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Ayres. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Just so you know, Madam Chair, this Hitzkamp works on a lot of projects for the county. The county pays dues in the Planning District Commission, and for those dues, we simply expand our planning staff. And so they help us with a lot of grants, and a lot of projects, and a lot of plans, and this is, this is what we pay for. So I think, I think we're well-served for our money. We're not going to pay him about $40,000.
Appreciate that, Mr. Robinson. Thank you, Mr. Trump. Up next, we have the county EDA MOU for Madison Heights, CBD grant. Mr. Robinson, are you taking this one? I'll keep it for you.
I thought Victoria would be here for this, but I will take it.
All right, this, this is just an MOU between the county and the EDA to use the financing authority of the CDB, Community Development Block Grant from Department Housing, Community Development. And so this agreement is with regard to the Old Town Madison Heights streetscape improvement. And I'm asking for authority to sign the agreement, the MOU as is presented there in the board package.
Or any questions? Or a motion?
Madam Chair, move that the board adopt resolution 2021-0003-R as presented.
A motion on the floor by Mr. Ayres. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are you going to have that brought in?
Yes, ma'am. This item is for broadband grant appropriation. This follows up to the item that I presented to you earlier at the broadband authority meeting. The board is being asked to appropriate funds to the broadband authority in order to pay for the work proposed under the contract, the contracts awarded during the broadband authority meeting. The motion is for the board to approve approximately $1.37 million to the broadband authority for the purpose of paying for the work proposed, under the proposed contract that's awarded during the broadband authority meeting and authorize the county administrator to execute the agreement. I will be back up tonight with further information on the broadband stuff I talked about earlier.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Or a motion?
Madam Chair, move that the board approve an appropriation in the amount of $1,370,000 to the broadband authority for the purpose of paying for the work proposed under the contract awarded during the broadband authority meeting and authorize the county administrator to execute the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. There is a motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the county administrator report.
Yes, Madam Chair. I have before the board a project status report with the various projects we've been reporting on, the landfill, just a few highlights, the landfill and transfer station, the earthwork is underway, although it's slowed recently by the snow and the mud, waiting for that to dry up a bit.
Can I stop you there?
Sure.
So to have them correct, I think November is, is when the landfill will be full? That's when we had projected?
Well, yes, it is, and that's what we're planning for, the transfer station to be completed. However, we are working with DEQ to reopen the backside of the landfill. So if you go onto the backside, you can see there's this high point, and then it drops down to a lower shelf. And so we're seeking permission, just as backup, as permission to reopen that, which is just pull the dirt off the top and then begin adding trash to that, to extend the life of the landfill. It could extend it as long as two years, to give us time in case there's weather events, in case there's anything that slows down the construction, and to help us, you know, prepare for the transition over it. You know, it was just, it's just too tight a window to have one end and the other begin on the next day. So we've been pursuing that with DEQ, the engineers.
I just remember, it hadn't been that long ago, we were, we were put under the gun pretty severely, and we needed to make that decision extremely fast, because we had it till November, it was going to be full, and now we're going to go ahead and open up the backside of it. I was just, you know, we were under the gun at that time. I didn't realize we had a little bit more time to discuss maybe some more of the data that could have been brought forward, but what is the timeline for the, for everything to be completed?
Well, it's, it's for the transfer station. It is still November of '21. They haven't yet told us that they're going to back up, but you know, we didn't provide them much, we waited, didn't give them much wiggle room, and give us much time to make the transition. But so far, they say they can still do it. You know, it's weather dependent. You get a hurricane or two during the summer, and it's, it's really going to slow down. So we're just trying to be prepared for that.
Well, we were under pressure because of the bond.
Originally, yes, but then we refinanced. We have, we have time, the money does, there is time to do that. The board had made the decision. I don't see a reason to go back and revisit it. We're moving forward to implement the will of the board, and we can.
I understand, and it just seemed, you know, we have to do this today, if we don't do it today, then it's, it's not going to get done. Here we go, we're going to actually have to reopen the landfill and extend the life of it. And I mean, maybe, I know nothing goes as always as it's planned, and, but it just seemed like we were really under the gun, and now we have a little bit more wiggle room.
Well, yes, sir, we were. You know, and we operate from the facts that we have at the time, and that's what we were aware of at the time. Since Brian Thacker has arrived, he's explored these other options. You've seen the level of productivity he has and his creativity, and he's thought, well, this would help us, and so he's been pursuing that to give us more time. I mean, at most, it'll extend the life of the landfill a couple of years, and that will help keep our costs down while we transition over to the transfer station. The big question for us was whether to build another cell or not. So we decided not to build a cell, and we need to go to a transfer station. It just, by that time, we'd eaten up so much time that the contractor was telling us, look, if you want it built by the time we can know your landfill in its current configuration, we didn't even think about reopening it. It's quite a bit of work to reopen it, just with the permitting and so forth, and engineering work. But I just think it's prudent.
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
So the last thing I want to do is revisit all of that. Understand, and it does make sense to go ahead and finish filling up what's already there, I get that part. But once we go and we start, we get to committing, we start moving trash around, are we committed then to fill out that whole thing? Or once the transfer station is up, can we say, okay, we're done again?
We could say we're done. I mean, we're going to look at costs and what savings cost, and we don't know yet how far we're going to have to transport, what that's going to cost. But you know, so long as we have the equipment and the space, it makes sense. We were preparing for the end of space, and so we're still preparing for the end of space by building the transfer station. We just bought us some more time.
So on eight months, we're thinking on where the best bid, transfer, approach, out of the farm.
Yes, sir. That's incredibly tight.
Yeah, I get that. So, I mean, are you, where it's going, how much it's going to cost? Because that's not a lot of time.
No, it's not. That's correct. But you're, yes, for when it, when it comes operational, we've got to have our contracts in place on where we're going to haul it to. You funded the vehicles we need to get it there, and we're on track. Now, we're on track so long as they can finish construction in eight months, and I think that's really tight. But it is, after all, just a lot of concrete and a metal shell building. We can purchase the equipment and have that, we have the people. They've got to build road to it and so forth. I mean, I'm not trying to belittle it, but it is a simple project, and it is possible. So, other items, just to let you know, on there, Boxwood Farm is awaiting asphalt, the asphalt plants to open up when it gets warm weather again. That'll be in March, they'll do that. I'm going to pull the River View and Service Convenience Centers off the list. I don't think we're interested in those, and I'm not going to pursue those until I get further guidance. I think we're waiting to see how everybody settles in on the existing convenience centers. So I'm not going to track that anymore. With regard to River Edge Park Trail, it is out to bid, and so on March 18th, those bids close, and hopefully we can begin the next 500-foot section of the trail and cross that John Gravine. It makes all of the CBT properties available, we already hold that. It makes all of the CBTC property available, we already hold that easy. And finally, with regard to the Madison Heights Master Plan, we are designing the statement of words right now that would, either we go out to bid or, you know, we're talking with HDR at present because they did the CBTC Master Plan, that would be able to get a deal and that they could provide the level of detail that we want. We're not sure that they can, we may have to go out and contact for that, find somebody else, but we're still sorting that out with them. They have all the economic data, they have access, but we're not sure that they can do the zoning work that we want to do, the design work that we want done. So that, but that continues to move forward. Also, you should know the financial software, that has brought a consultant to help us with the financial software, that's gone out to bid, that'll close in September, March. That's all I have on that. Let's see if they have any questions about that or any other questions.
Want to have an introduction?
Yes, that's now. So Mr. Nowley, if you would come forward. Our new Director of Recreation, Tourism, and Cultural Development is Patrick Nowley. He comes from Gresham, Oregon. For the last three years, he's been managing the aquatics facility of Community College here in Oregon. Have a $2 million budget, staff of over 100. They ran their own concessions, construction projects, had partnerships with 11 schools, 50 businesses, a budget of 13 different programs, with a year-round schedule of events, along with all the marketing, those were back. And he built and marketed whole new attractions and programs there. Before that, he was in Payton, Colorado, in their Parks and Rec Department for three years, also over at Florence. He started his career early on in swimming. He was a swim coach and recruiting director for Pennsylvania State University. He has a BA in Geography and History from Arizona State, a master's degree in Sports Administration from Arkansas State, and he's finishing up this summer, we hope, his doctorate in Public Administration from Westchester University in Pennsylvania. He's a Certified Parks and Recreation Professional from that, certified from the National Recreation Parks Association, got a wife and 20-month-old daughter.
20-month-old daughter.
And they all, they're living in Richmond at the moment, and they're engaged in housing. Today was his first day, so he's still on his first day.
Very long first day, well.
They usually don't say thank you.
Yeah, looking forward to getting started, hopefully raising the quality of life for the people here in Amherst County, getting them to use some of the natural resources that we have out here, and doing so at very little taxpayer expense, which is what I like about it. I like the local government aspect of it, so.
Well, we're glad to hear. Sounds like you've come with a welcome to experience, and also welcome to the East Coast, but it sounds like you pulled some time in Pennsylvania.
A little time in Pennsylvania, yeah, from the Midwest, Indiana, Ohio originally, growing up, so.
Well, we're glad you're here. Or anything else?
Yeah, I've spent some time in Oregon, and it's absolutely beautiful there. Did that hold a candle to this place?
Well, good, yeah. We hardly made the switch because I didn't, we didn't want to raise our daughter in Portland, Oregon.
Oh, my.
We wanted something like that, so, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
You can go home if you want.
Sure, I want to eat something at some point.
All right, moving on to the county attorney's report.
I have nothing, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the VAI Committee Report, Mr. Cooper, Air Cultural Committee, have any updates?
Um, I can't give you any, I have a little bit of something to say. We met last week with two members of the Nelson County Board to discuss, you know, a project that we may be working on together. It was, it was good to meet our colleagues from another county and kind of listen to ideas that they had, I think we're kind of on the same note here. Jimmy, anything else to add?
Pretty much it, you know, they're, it's very preliminary for them too, and we just want to make sure logistically it's conducive and, you know, we just have another meeting scheduled for March 10th, so just take small steps to make sure that it works for both one counties and that the properties will be conducive to what the needs will be.
And the next meeting is, Jimmy says March 10th here in this room at 7:00 PM.
Uh, yeah.
Fine. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, or Frank?
I was just, was going to thank Mr. Rogers for hiring the new director so quickly, and just wanted to reiterate our love to him and his work with him as the board lead to the department.
If I may, Madam Chair, Mr. Martin Jojo Alcock participated in the initial interviews, and Heather Follin participated in the live interviews of the candidates.
I appreciate you making that.
Thank you. Moving on to department reports, Mr. Brown, annual report.
Okay, Mike O'Brien is here to provide your annual report. Mike O'Brien is the Vice Chairman of the Planning Commission. Our chairman couldn't be with us tonight. Mike O'Brien is the Assistant Project Manager, he's an Assistant Project Manager at Hurt and Profit. He has a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from ODU, and he's been in this field for 10 years. Michael is a lifelong resident of Amherst with the exception of one year in order to Virginia where he experienced a lot of traffic and decided that coming back to Amherst was a good decision to raise his family. This is his third calendar year serving on the Planning Commission, and he is going to give you the annual report.
Thank you for coming out, Mike.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and supervisors. Thank y'all for having me tonight. Mike Martini was really sorry that he could not come tonight, and he wanted me just to express that, and so I'm filling in for him. And before we get started as well, I also wanted to just note that the, how appreciative the Planning Commission is of the staff. They put in a ton of work that helped make our commission meetings go real smoothly and smoothly, and they also give us a wealth of information that helps us to make the well-informed decisions and to help keep the county moving in the right direction and to help y'all out as well with the decisions that we need to make. So starting off with the annual report, we'll take a quick look, just briefly go over some of the things that happened in 2020. These are just some of the large things that we did, and so the, as y'all know, in 2020 we had the census come about, and so the, y'all had created a, the Complete Account Committee, and which was spearheaded by the County Community Development Team. And with that committee, they were able to help reach out to the community and engage the citizens and help make sure that everybody in the community was accounted. Another big item that went live last year was the Citizen and Contract Community Development Portal. I feel that this was probably, couldn't have come at a better time given that COVID hit. So with that happening and a lot of people having to adjust their times, their schedules, having to do more things at home and stuff, and not being able to come out and conduct business as usual, this portal allows citizens and contractors to have a more convenient way to apply for permits. They can also pay fees and they can communicate with county staff. They can also request site inspections as well, and it's just a great tool that gives the county access, more quick access to be able to communicate with the projects that are going on in the county and to help people with the, get their, get their projects going. Another big item that we took, that we did is that we adopted the new solar ordinance. This was a pretty big ordinance, it's kind of, Amherst County was kind of behind the game a little bit with the surrounding areas with this, and we had, so with this ordinance, it allows for three different types of solar facilities to be built. It allows for a small agricultural and then utility scale. The small and agricultural are, can be allowed without any special permissions, but the utility scale is where a special exception would be required in most zoning districts. And immediately, right after we adopted this, we had Soul America come in and apply for a permit, and we offered for a five megawatt power facility off of Union Hill Road, which is just north of the town of Amherst. Looking at everything just by the numbers, just breaking it down real quick, we had 474 zoning permits, 104 single-family dwelling permits, 21 building addition permits, 74 home occupation permits, 138 accessory permits, eight wireless communication facility permits, 15 sign permits, and 11 site plans. And then just to kind of go into a little more detail on some of those, what we've done, the special exceptions, we had 10 special exceptions last year, and we approved all but one. Y'all are most familiar with the convenience center off of Riverview Road that we denied that, and from here that is probably no longer going to be sold out. But the other, the other special exceptions range from dog kennels to Airbnbs and then to the solar farm as well. Looking at the site plans that we approved, breakdown of those, we had, you know, ranging from industrial buildings down to the transfer station, and we had even an awning being built on the side of another building, and then of course, the solar farm. We also had three rezonings last year, and these were all in the effort to take advantage of some of the money that was given to the county and to provide bathrooms and facilities at the parks and to rezone those, because they originally were all agricultural, but we needed to have them to be a small portion set aside as a public land in order to build the bathroom. Now we'll take a look at just the trends over the last five years. Now this is, this was what kind of surprised a lot of us, was that given how impacted last year was with business and stuff, with COVID and everything, just the rest of the economy and all that, we still came out high on our housing and accessory structures. And as you see there, we, it's higher than it is the last five years, and the housing also is also the highest it has been in the last decade. And if you look at the zoning permits, we also have 474 zoning permits, again, higher, the highest it's been in the last five years. To me, this tells us that we're going in the right direction, given how, you know, slowed down everything was last year, you know, the changes that we've made to make us more business-friendly, and also with the portal going up and becoming active, you know, it gives the residents and community and contractors and businesses the ability to, you know, readily communicate with the county and to get permits and get their projects We briefly earlier talked about the Madison Heights Master Plan, you know, that's something else that's coming up this year. So these next few slides are going to be kind of things that are just coming up in the future that will be helping. And obviously, as the Planning Commission, you know, we'll have a big role in that with helping out with zoning and making decisions on, you know, where and how it does to plan that use of those areas. This is primarily just between the 29 and 29 business. It's also from 130 all the way to the James River. It's a pretty big swath of land, there's got a couple of really large tracts that we know of that are undeveloped, that could be developed, and it's in an effort that will help, you know, get the landowners in contact with potential developers and, you know, just give people an idea of what and how to better use their property in the county. And of course, another big area in this, included in that is the redevelopment of the Central Virginia Training Center. Last, at the end of the year, we partnered with the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance and to develop the Central Virginia Training Center Master Plan, and I saw a couple of you there at the workshop that they held that was for a week long in the city, and it was really interesting to go there and see that, see that master plan get generated and developed over throughout the week. A lot of people from the community came out and to speak and share their ideas, and you know, to have a plan like this, you know, really helps put us out there, really helps advertise the county and the potential that the county has, and hopefully, as work continues on this effort to develop that master plan and to seek out potential developers and investors, it will hopefully provide a better future in that area. Connecting to the community, the county continues to increase its broadband capabilities. As y'all know, and touched on earlier, we have the Federal Carers Act grant of $1.3700,000 million. Sorry about that. And this funding is going to go to three new towered areas, and it will help provide access to 466 homes. We also have another project that's going, that's already funded, already appropriated to it, that's going to provide 200 and some homes also with broadband. So the county's moving in the right direction with broadband and giving people access. As we all know, everybody spent more time at home last year. I don't know about y'all, I did plenty of binge watching, and I was fortunate enough to have a job that I could also work remotely from home. So you know, having that broadband and the high-speed internet access capability, it really opens up possibilities for residents and even for businesses, giving them access to the information economy, the Internet of Things, electronic commerce, and big data and streaming services. A few other things that are coming up in 2021, there is the new food truck ordinance, and we also made a decision and approved the by right site plan approval by county staff. Just to let y'all know, the 11 site plans that we approved last year, eight of those were by right. I actually had a little bit of heartache over this because me being a civil engineer, I enjoy looking at plans and enjoyed that process of the meetings, but knowing the benefit that it would serve to the community and to developers, you know, being able to not, to skip a process that wouldn't really change anything anyway, you know, speeds up their work and makes Amherst County more appetizable in that sense, you know, for developers. We've got the Rivers Edge Park Extension, and one of the big things coming up is we've got to begin the process for updating our comprehensive plan that needs to be updated in 2022, and then followed by a complete rewrite from 2027. That's looking way down the road. I hope y'all found this information informative, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Mr. Brown, thank you for coming tonight, and also thank you for your commitment and service to the county on the annual report.
Yes ma'am.
Or anything? Any questions, comments?
I just, Jeremy on the portal, I would just like a little bit of feedback on that, how that's been working out, and is that being used more? I guess it's been used more now than ever, but I mean, how's that working out?
Yeah, it is. It's worked out, it's worked out great, but of course, with anything new, and you can do electronic, we learn from it, and we learn from it when people do it more, but it gives people opportunity to perform on, we've seen a lot, we're still seeing less people come in, because the more people are familiar with how to use it, the more they can do it online, at home, and of course, having the ability, you know, five years ago, we could take ride cars, and you know, the fact that we can do everything electronic now has just improved our ability to move things faster and quicker.
And you promote that in every chance you get, I was.
Yeah, it's good.
And also, the other one is the single-family dwellings, the last, the most seen in the last decade. You know, oftentimes, we'll sit, some of us that sit on the Amherst County Service Authority, we need to get more customers, we need to do this, but actually, I mean, some of the houses aren't in the growth area, obviously, but I mean, it's a good trend to see that we had 100, I don't know if it was 104 houses last year, which is good news, you know, as far as activity in the construction area, so, yeah. Sometimes we're pessimistic and we don't think things are going the right way, but when we take a look back and realize but when we take a look back and realize it's turned the corner and in a positive direction.
Ms. Tucker?
As you're, you're a shining example of why these appointments that we make to these commissioners are so important. The idea that we get, we get your expertise to guide us in, in the planning for the county is that you can't put a price tag on that and say, "Thank you." Thank you for your service and please give Mr. Muzin go our best.
Or anything?
Mr. Martinu?
Martinu, I'm sorry.
Yep. All right, thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, where the next few things on the agenda are for information only. The Treasurers Report, Cares Act Update, General Fund Budget Test Report. Any questions on any of those? Okay? Other, Mr. Bryant?
I'm back up already? You ready at F?
We are. You zoom right through those.
All right. Oh, one second. Let's light them up. What I'd like to do is provide the map that I referenced to you twice now. Okay. All right, Mr. Martin, that's for us, a project update on where we are with broadband. And broadband has been just an enormously busy topic and it's great and we're extremely happy to continue to make progress. What I'm going to try to do is walk you through just some real generalities. So if you can see the map, I'm going to, I'm going to read off some color coding and so hopefully we all see the colors the same way. But in general, we've been working on broadband, we've been talking about broadband for 10 years or more. We've been really digging in for the past five, six years on broadband and broadband has been, um, an utter challenge given our topography and the size of any rural locality. And so it's, it's, it honestly, it's probably one of the most exciting things I've seen is the progress over the past year, year and a half on, on seeing it all come together, not only like statewide nationally, but, but locally here in Amherst. So if you look at the map, um, the yellow area on the map, the yellow area on the map here and in this area is Vatty pending. We're waiting on Vatty to make a decision for this year. We could know, we could know this week, we could know next week, we could know the following week. We, we could know soon if that yellow area gets funded. That area is for, would be for fiber extension, fiber tunnel. The orange areas are what we, what you've approved tonight contractually, but they're, they're actually in service now. These orange areas are in service now and what, and it's what we were scrambling on so fast to do and to make happen with Firefly. That's also an area that's in service today.
That's right. I may be asking too much, but the yellow area, can you identify where that is in the county?
I'll take a point of reference because I can't tell.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, this map's a little difficult to see at the scale. Generally, this is the new Glasgow. There's some, some of the Clifford area. This is Route 151 here. So like Wynton is just on the other side of this yellow area, but that yellow area should be covered. This is a little bit harder to define because it doesn't follow any natural boundaries. It picks up a fair amount of homes, but this was also part of the Vatty application that went in. Generally kind of some of the Azu Walton area. The, the orange areas we've talked about, right? So these are the three areas we've discussed previously, this being kind of 60 East area. And this magenta area is, is what we call the Gladstone Cares Project. It's, and it was the area that was delayed, but will be built in over the next few months. So again, we're in good shape there because that was also part of Cares funding, okay? The red area, this red area is the rest of the SEVAC area and it is planned for construction over the next 15 months. And one thing we learned from a meeting with Gary Wood and SEVAC and Firefly was that they were able to secure either CAF2 funding. There was two different federal funding streams that came from different administrations and they were named differently. There was one named in Trump administration and one in the Obama administration. And so this red area is SEVAC area and again, will be planned for construction with over the next 15 months, okay? Ms. Tucker, this is Route 60.
So the SEVAC area that you're referencing, is that only for SEVAC customers? Or have they worked out a deal with AEP and using their poll?
Correct, correct. They're working on a deal with AEP to get poll agreements. They have to get poll agreements with AEP and according to Mr. Wood from SEVAC, AEP's been very cooperative working with SEVAC. They've established a very good working relationship. The, um, the blue area is this blue area here and all of this blue area and this blue area. The blue area is 5,000 different homes, including 1,100 SEVAC service homes. And SEVAC has committed to a maximum six-year bailout plan that anticipates completion much sooner, targeting four years. Okay, so that's, those are areas according to SEVAC they've also received funding for. And they can, they can begin, uh, they're, they're working towards building that out. They have to do it within six years. That's what they're required to do, but they think they can do it in four years.
If you recall, when, when Gary Wood was here, he kept alluding to federal funding that he could not talk about. And that has since been awarded and that's what he was talking about. He would get, he would get funding to fill those areas out, to reach the homes.
Okay, the, the red outline is generally where Comcast is. That's generally what they cover.
Generally, but not all that it is covered. I, I get quite a.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. Um, the, you have to look at it from a home-by-home basis because they stop at the end of certain roads. There's gaps where they, where they just don't cover, but generally they're in that area. What, what, what we're left with are these uncolored areas. So this eastern side of Amherst, sometimes it's a little bit of Gulston Road down into near, near the interchange. And then certainly the areas just west, so the Tabaro Mountain and then everything here is Route 130 coming out here and you've got obviously some national parks. So density is not a lot right here. We will have a fair number of homes here and then down towards the river. So there's a, there's a lot of areas even down in the river road area that are not covered. And so these are the areas we'll need to focus on for the future. They're the areas we'll need to focus on for future grants, future opportunities and applications. And the black dots on the maps are generally where there are wireless towers in the county. I don't have the ability right now to map exactly where that is because the files I've perceived from that format that I can use to easily map exactly the locations in terms of the coverage maps, that generally the black dots are where they're wireless. So we, we have made extremely great progress and we've, we have found a great partner in Central Virginia Electric Co-op thus far and Firefly. And so again, we need to start looking at the areas that are uncolored because those are areas that are unfunded right now. And that might be what we want to do with county funds in the future. We might want to think about if there are county funds, if you have a Cares fund, that we look at how we can use any future money to our greatest extent. And that's what we're exploring now. This is kind of where we're at, this is a snapshot of where we're at today, what we're seeing, what we know. Any questions?
So if we are not successful in getting a grant for the yellow areas, what happens to those?
They, they, we, we need to either find another funding stream, whether that be, whether that be county funds, whether we just continue to pursue further grants. We'll have to look for funding.
So they wouldn't just become part of the blue?
Correct, they're not part of the blue area. That's correct.
A lot, a lot of the federal funds have these exclusivity provisions. They won't go where somebody else already is. And you can see the black dots where the towers are. But I think there's general dissatisfaction with wireless and towers. It just are a lot of political hassle for you all with public hearings and so forth and unhappy customers. And we, we would like to just continue to press forward with fiber if we can. But, but once we have those Vatty results, then we'll, uh, be, since we know what areas are uncovered, not addressed, we've got to do two things. One, figure out how to reach those best and put out a request for proposals. And the other thing we got to do is figure out how to get Comcast to finish building out. Now, that's just a loose outline and it's, and it's, as you know, there's lots of empty slots in there. But, you know, we have a non-disclosure agreement with them. We know exactly where their lines are, but we can't share that. We cannot make that public. But that, you know, one of the things we'll do, and I, if you're amenable to it, is in our request for proposals, ask Comcast, give us bids on which streets you want to finish out. Okay, we can help you with that and, and then we'll see where we get the most bang for our buck. But I can tell you, in working with them to date, it's near impossible to get them to do anything. It takes multiple reminders and multiple areas of contact in your company. They move slowly. And, uh, I mean, we're just trying to get a line, you know, to get that one out to the landfill and it's taking months and they get to pass dozens and dozens of new customers. So this is not a big, they don't make a lot of money and it's as if they don't care. So that'll be a challenge and it may just be worth our money to spend it on fiber and get the people that we know we can get to and figure out a way to apply pressure to Comcast somehow. Something they'll listen to.
Or any other questions? Thank you for the update.
You're welcome. It's great to do it.
This time we will open the floor back up for citizen comments. If there's anyone here wishing to speak. Anybody here wishing to speak for citizen comments? We will close that out. Who wants to matter from the members of the board?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Air?
I'm Chair. Mr. Rogers got a complaint today from a citizen on Camden Drive regarding the condition of the road surface on Camden Drive. Can you maybe shoot a message to Mr. Bryant so they can take a look at it?
What do you mean by road service?
It's potholes and the conditions of the road surface on Camden.
Is that, that was not the road that you said?
That was probably Bill, but that's.
Camden Drive and Agon Commute. I have nothing, Colonel.
Thank you, Chair. Mark?
No, ma'am.
Mr. King?
No, ma'am.
Uh, but the only thing that I'll mention is that I did send an email to, you know, in reverse Rocky Hill, I went down there today, took some pictures and there's some pretty deep. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So would the matter?
Motion on the floor by Mr. Air is all in favor if they ask. Any opposed? Good evening.